Yeah, thank you. Good morning. It's the twenty ninth of April and we have our ordinary council meeting for twenty ninth of April twenty twenty one and the meeting time is now nine o'clock on the dot. I'll call attendants and I can see that we have full attendance. Good morning to you all. And we'll move on to the acknowledgement of country and I believe councillor Fekner. You're going to acknowledge of country.
Thank you, Mayor, and good morning, everyone. A bit of a special acknowledgement this morning. As we all know, the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council published their annual report about two weeks ago now, and I thought it was quite timely to pull out the acknowledgement of country that appears in in their annual report. So there's the traditional acknowledgement on behalf of the Youth Advisory Council and Ipswich City Council, and then it goes on to a more personalised reflection from one of the members, Casey, and she's put this together on of her own accord, and I thought it was too beautiful not to share at this morning's council ordinary meeting. So the Ipswich Youth Advisory Council and Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land and waters we share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging, as the keepers of traditions, cultures and stories of a proud people. Casey goes on. With more than sixty thousand years' experience as the custodians of the land and waters, Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples have and continue to walk with our ancestors to shape the landscape, our families, our next generations. Our culture, our traditions, our stories and our strength live on through our children and young people. Our elders pass on their wisdoms of future generations to teach and share the cycle they continue, ensuring the history of Indigenous Australia is never forgotten, never repeated, and true reconciliation can happen. Our children and young people are at the heart of our community and always will be. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Fekner. I think that's especially poignant coming from the Ipswich Advisory Council and you being the first of the alumni to become a councillor. That's great to hear that. Thank you.
Absolutely, and I think very poignant in the adoption of our corporate plan today as well, and that focus on the next generation.
Thank you. And then move on to the opening prayer. Councillor Ireland?
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, grant that we who seek to serve you in the affairs of this council may have wisdom in our deliberations, the guiding of your hand in our works, and the grace to serve together to advance the prosperity of our city. Amen.
Thank you, councillor Ireland. We'll now move on to apologies and leave of absence, and there are none. I don't want to declare any. Item five, condolences, there are nil. Tributes, number six, there are nil. We move on to seven, the presentation of petition from France Street, Eastern Heights, and that petition reads, petition for Ipswich City Council, request for cul-de-sac, France Street bottom end where it meets with Robertson Road. As this traffic coming out of France Street will be severely hampered now that new lights have been installed on the corner of Grange Road. France Street is a hundred and twenty metres to another set of lights on Raceview Street entering busy Robertson Road. We've endured many months of roadworks at the bottom of our street and would like welcome France Street becoming closed, being closed to becoming a cul-de-sac. And I'll just read, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eleven signatures from local residents around that area. So in accordance with section eight ten of council's meeting procedures, the policy, the only motion allowed for a petition presented is that the petition be received or received and referred to a committee or officer for consideration and a report back to council. So I guess I look for a motion for the petition to either be received or received and referred to a council officer or committee.
I'll move, Mayor, to receive, and we'll progress that through a council officers' report.
Received, referred to a council officers' report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Doyle. Thank you. I'll now open it up for any discussion on this.
Yep. Councillor Doyle and I had the privilege of going and meeting one of the residents at France Street yesterday to discuss this petition. Colin Wall outlined his views around the reasoning behind this petition. They're very happy with the work that council's done there, even though it did drag on and there were many complications that needed to be overcome for the final product. You know, they've since acknowledged that the traffic flow through their street hasn't increased as drastically as they may have thought, but I think it's important that we do have our council officers just monitor that traffic flow over the next, you know, three to six months and maybe report back after such time that we have enough data to reflect and really respond to this petition. Colin is a fierce advocate for, you know, traffic safety and he was integral in achieving, you know, a set of lights over in Raceview where he used to live. So he's used to being a community advocate for traffic safety in any community that he's lived in. So I just want to acknowledge the hard work that he does in helping our community stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to add, I would also like to thank the residents of France and Edgar Streets in Eastern Heights for their petition. In addition to councillor Fekner's comments, I'd just like to point out again that Mr Whaley was very complimentary of council officers that performed the construction work, which was very, very disruptive to the residents there, but he was very complimentary of the staff, and I'm always delighted to get good feedback about the organisation. With that being said, however, councillor Fekner and I are committed every single day, you know, when we're dealing with residents to just identifying efficiencies as well as, you know, potential improvements. In the way we engage with our residents as the city expands and we undergo, you know, construction works, it is a huge impact on residents. So we are committed to ensuring that the engagement and communication lines are open and clear. Thank you.
I guess myself, I live in Raceview, so I drive past that at least twice a day, if not more, and, you know, that the additional drainage that was required, I think that's part of that intersection, the drainage down France Street. So I'd say they probably had it almost like a cul-de-sac there, really probably for nearly six months, I'd say. So I think it only just opened last week, from memory. So I will be voting to support this because I think it'd be important to see what the traffic modelling shows.
Absolutely, I agree.
Any other discussion? There being discussion, I'll put the motion that the petition be received and referred to the appropriate council department for investigation and the preparation of a response or report back to council. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. And thank you very much to the residents of France Street and Edgar Street. Number eight is presentations and deputations, there are none. Nine, on public participation, there are none. I now come to number ten, the declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of interest? Anyone like to declare? Councillor Fekner?
Thank you, Mayor. In accordance with section one fifty EQ of the Local Government Act of two thousand and nine, I, councillor Andrew Fekner, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in items numbers fourteen point six entitled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee's report, and also fifteen point seven. The nature of both of those conflicts is my business interest in both Bar Heisenberg Proprietary Limited and A1A Events Proprietary Limited, both located in the top of town of Ipswich. I plan on dealing with this conflict by leaving the room while both matters are discussed and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Fekner, for making those declarations. Councillor Ireland, you had your hand up?
Ah, yes, please. In accordance with section one fifty EQ three B and one fifty EQ three C of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I advise that I had provided notice to the chief executive officer on the twenty third of March twenty twenty one that I will have a declarable conflict of interest in any matter that may involve Mr Garth Lawellan purchasing a parcel of land adjoining his property in North Bevel. The nature of the interest is that Mr Garth Lawellan is a long-term family friend. I advise that I will leave the meeting room, including any area set aside for the public when this matter is being discussed and voted on.
Is it being any discussed today?
No.
Thank you very much, councillor Ireland. And councillor Madsen?
In accordance with section one hundred and fifty EQ of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I councillor Jacob Madsen, inform the meeting that I have a declarable conflict of interest in item fourteen point six titled Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee's report. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is I'm a member of the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee. We own and operate the Ipswich Trades Hall, which is immediately adjacent to the Ipswich Central redevelopment. As a result of my conflict of interest, I will leave the meeting room while the matter is discussed and voted on.
Thank you very much, councillor Madsen. Are there any other declarations of interest? There being none, we'll move on now to the main body, on to the confirmation of the minutes, and then we have the confirmation of the minutes of the meeting from the twenty fifth of March twenty twenty one. May I have a mover for that, please?
I'll be.
May I have a second? Thank you, councillor Regan. Other than any discussion, there being no discussion, I'll move it to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Move on to eleven point two, which is the Ipswich City Council minutes of the special meeting on the fifteenth of April twenty twenty one. May I have a mover, please? That, thank you councillor Fekner. A second?
No second.
Councillor Doyle, thank you. I open that up for discussion. There being no discussion, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and passed. Move on to item twelve, which is a merril minute. There is no merril minute at this meeting. So we move on to thirteen, which is matters, business outstanding and matters lying on the table. There are none. So move on to the next one, which is the fourteen reception consideration of committee reports. Now, the first one is the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee Report. Notably, that committee already has full council delegations, and as the chair of that, I will move that the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee Report, number twenty twenty one oh three of the fifteenth of April twenty twenty one, be noted. Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Fekner. Open it up for discussion. There being no discussion, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. I have a note here, if I may, with a G I W councillor Tully. You raised an issue about the title of item four in that, about the Springfield Domain Parkland Management. I know this is different to the executive summary, which is Rebell Domain Stage Two Parklands Management. I've had some feedback from council offices, but I'd afford that minutes of the Growth Infrastructure and Waste Committee titled fourteen dash fifteen dash one oh eight Springfield Domain Parklands Management be amended to reflect the correct title of the contract, the fourteen dash fifteen dash one oh eight Rebell Domain Stage Two dash Parkland Management Agreement. So, can you help me sort that out? Are you okay with that, councillor Tully?
Yes, I received that email, I think, yesterday to clarify the wording. It was, it's probably better to be, you know, the correct terminology be used.
Thank you. And now move on to fourteen point two, which is the Governance and Transparency Committee Report. I'll hand over to the chair of that committee, councillor Madsen. Would you like to speak to this?
Sure. A lot of standard business matters were attended to last week, last fortnight, a number of procurement matters. Nothing really to say outside of those officers' reports, other than we had a question on notice about councils' pools. That's one of those procurement matters was about the supply of LPG gas for pool heating. So Origin provide LPG gas to councils' pools at Goodna, Bundambra and Lykhardt. However, the Rosewood Pool is heated by an electric heat pump. So I thought I'd just bring that to attention of councillors this morning.
Thank you.
And obviously, thank you to Mr White for answering that question.
So are you moving that items one through to ten that are moved in batch? Yes, I'll put you move that. Do I have a second for that, councillor Regan? I'll then leave that up for discussion. Okay, there being no discussion, I put the recommendation that that councillor adopt the recommendations of the Governance and Transparency Committee Report, number twenty twenty one, in brackets, oh three, of the fifteenth of April twenty twenty one. And those in favour, please raise your hand. Unanimous and passed. Thank you very much. Now move on to item fourteen point three, which is the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee Report, and that recommendation is that council adopt the recommendations of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee Report, number twenty twenty one, in brackets, oh three, of the fifteenth of April twenty twenty one. I'll hand it over to the chair to see if you would like to speak to that, and if you just to batch those or not.
Thank you, Mayor. I will stick to the recommendation to move to adopt the recommendations of the committee. Just a couple of highlights for everyone. It was the library resources procurement was a bit of a topic that we had some late mail introduced to. We have had the minutes reflect that, but just for the benefit of the whole of council. The state government do chip in quite a substantial amount every year to make sure that we have the best library resources for our city. And it's an extraordinary amount of money, but a great investment for educational outcomes in Ipswich. So I just want to acknowledge that funding from the state government as the late mail in that particular item. And then we had some event sponsorships discussions, and namely the Ipswich Show and the forty five thousand dollars that we will be giving them in support this year, just as a one-off to help them in their COVID recovery and to make sure that our community has a wonderful time at the Ipswich Show this year. So they're the highlights, but I would like to move all of the recommendations of our committee.
Thank you very much, councillor. Do I have a second, councillor Madsen? I open it up for discussion. I guess the only discussion I was going to mention with item six was just around the fact that, I don't know if it would be less now, but our two million dollars in community funding, they, I think, expensed about one point two million of that. I think that's changed now in the last few weeks. But just note the fact that if you are a community group, you're a sporting group, small business, please get on to Ipswich City Council's website for grants, and we have some great grants there for small businesses, for community groups and for sporting clubs. It's been a really tough year for these groups to fundraise, especially the charities and the community groups and sporting groups. So please get on there, and we'd love to see your applications. If there's nothing else, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Now move on to item fourteen point four, which is the Economic and Industry Development Committee Report. And that recommendation is that council adopts the recommendations of the Economic and Industry Development Committee Report, number twenty twenty one, in brackets, oh three, of the fifteenth of April twenty twenty one. And I'll look over to the chair to see if you'd like to speak to that or recommend batching them or not, or separating the items.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I recommend batching the items, and just would like to mention one of the items being the calendar of events that are coming up for the small business month of May. So that's kicking off as early as tomorrow, which is very exciting for the small business friendly function, and then a nice early breakfast on Saturday morning as well to start the weekend off with so many excited small businesses in our region. So looking forward to that month. Thank you.
Do I have a second to that report? Thank you councillor Doyle. Leave it open for discussion. I think just carrying off of what you're saying, councillor John, it's, so that is the first of May, and May is Queensland Small Business Month, and we have the Queensland Small Business Minister out in Ipswich first thing Saturday morning with a breakfast, which is fantastic for us, I think, too. There's nothing anyone would like to add? I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Move on to fourteen point five, which is the Environment and Sustainability Committee. The recommendation is that council adopts the recommendation of the Environment Sustainability Committee Report, number twenty twenty one oh three, of the fifteenth of April. And I'll look over to the chair to see if you'd like to speak to it or batch the motions.
Thank you, Mayor. At the last African Sustainability Committee meeting, there was one new item, which was concerning Little Liverpool Range Initiative. It was an update, and recommendation was requesting that the partnership be extended for a further twelve months, and it was very well received and supported unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now, you're moving that report?
Thank you.
May I have a second for that? Thank you, councillor Fekner. Open for any discussion. There being no discussion, I put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. Now we're moving on to item fourteen point six, so I believe that councillor Fekner, Madsen, is the lead for that item. Thank you. Item fourteen point six is that council adopt the recommendations of the Ipswich Central Redevelopment Committee Report, number twenty twenty one oh three, of the fifteenth of April twenty twenty one. I'll look to the chair of that committee. Would you like to speak to it? And if you wish to just to batch those?
Thank you, Mayor. I propose that we batch items one through to four, excluding item number two, which is the retail subcommittee report. I'd just like to make a general comment. I know our residents are really excited by what's happening down in the Nicholas Street precinct with regard to the development, and everyone is absolutely chomping at the bit to understand what's next and what leasing partners we've managed to secure down there. And we're not in a position to reveal those details as yet. They're subject to confidentiality provisions. However, I would like to call on the relevant council officer to give us an update on the cinema process, the expression of interest process, just to let the public know where we're at in that process, as well as speak generally to the work underway by QTC here at council.
May I call for the relevant council officer to come to lecting, please? Please state your name and your job title.
Shaun Madigan, acting general manager of Infrastructure and Environment. So we might address the cinema E O I firstly. So earlier this year, council ran an expression of interest process for operators to come in and run our cinema that we're proposing in the former building known as Venue. As a result of that process, there were numerous parties who expressed an interest in coming to either lease the Venue Building and Operator Cinema or a management agreement with council. We were quite buoyed by the response of that, so there are significant players in the cinema operator market who have expressed an interest. Following that process, we have then conducted some tours of the facility with those parties who expressed an interest. And then now the next stage is to go out to a competitive tender process with those parties who expressed an interest in it to finalise an agreement. In terms of timeframe, we're proposing that we will be presenting a report to council confirming and a recommendation to award a contract to a supplier in July of this year. So the process is running very well. It is significant in terms of our precinct to get a cinema operator in terms of activation. All of the work that we have done thus far shows us the importance of that. So we are keen to progress this. So we are keen to progress this. The fact that multiple parties have expressed an interest in the cinema operator tells us that the market will in fact support a cinema and the community will support a cinema in that location. And we look forward to an announcement in July at a council meeting recommending to award the contract to one of those parties who have expressed an interest. So it's a positive process. It's a complex process. So to assist us in that and to ensure that we make the best decisions, we have engaged KPMG to provide some assistance there in terms of financial modelling and assessments of the criteria, as well as relevant industry experts such as Knight Frank to look at the commerciality of any agreement that is proposed. We further also have an independent probity advisor appointed to that to ensure that the proper process is followed and that it is transparent and in keeping with the will of the council. In relation to the work of QTC, so we are at a point in the retail development whereby all of the hard work over the last 12 to 18 months in terms of securing tenants and the like is coming to fruition. So we currently have, in terms of terms, 15 heads of agreements with significant tenants across the precinct. And now comes the time where council looks at those deals, looks at the commerciality of them and looks at what funds council will need to actually put into those precincts and the retail assets in order to get the best tenants in there and produce the best activation outcome for the people of Ipswich in our CBD precinct. What that means then is now that we have an understanding of the terms that are being sought by the industry, a lot of them are seeking what we refer to as a capital incentive. So that is an incentive of a cash payment, if you will, from council to the tenant to assist them in the fit out of their tenancy, which then they would occupy and lease out. Before COVID, the circumstance of that was a very different market to what we are in now. So at that time, pre-COVID, the general real estate industry in terms of retail was looking at smaller capital incentives, but with rental abatements over a prolonged period. That has now shifted to capital incentives. So what we are doing at the moment is formulating a full cost to complete for the project. And then following the advice and action of the mayor and deputy mayor, we've engaged Queensland Treasury Corporation to come in as an independent advisor to the council to review the commerciality of the terms that we're doing, looking at our investment model and then actually looking at what is our development strategy. So as many, all the council would be aware and members of the public, the strategy adopted under the administrator was to develop the assets, invest the money in them, probably maintain and operate them for a period of two years and then look at divesting those or selling those on the open market to prospective owners. What COVID has done somewhat is flipped the retail market on its head in terms of that. So what we are doing with QTC is looking at that model and actually saying, what is the best model in terms of ownership, divestment or owning and operating for council to achieve the greatest return on investment to ratepayers? So the general advice at present is if we were to develop them, spend the money that's required in terms of capital fit out and getting them up and running and then sell them may not in fact be the best outcome for the people of Ipswich. There are two significant drivers for the precinct that were identified previously. One is around the activation, you know, of a revitalized city heart. The second one is a return on investment. We're all aware of the long and protracted history of the CBD redevelopment. So what we have done is engaged QTC to actually have a look at it and provide us with a model and if you will, an investment and operating strategy that will ensure the optimal return on investment for the ratepayers' money that's been put into this precinct. QTC, whilst working very closely with us, are also performing an independent task as well. So they report back to the mayor and councillors in relation to that, you know, as the primary lender of council and very concerned with our financial situation, you know, given the fact that they are the lender to local governments. They have an interest in ensuring that we achieve the best outcomes we possibly can for every dollar that we invest into that precinct. So over the next few months, you can expect to see considerable announcements in relation to the leasing strategy, as well as some reports coming through to council with perhaps amended investment and operating strategies for the precinct off the back of the shift that has occurred over the last couple of years as a result of COVID and informed by the work that QTC are doing.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Madigan.
Thank you. Based on that report, councillor, would you like to move all four reports now that we've had that?
Yeah.
So I'll just amend that recommendation. So recommendation that council adopts the recommendations of the Ipswich Central redevelopment committee reports number 2021 O three of the fifteenth of April 2021. And it's moved by deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Cornsman. I'll then open it up for discussion. I thought it was really good to get that update from Mr. Madigan on the status. I think we're all waiting for when the cinema and the cafes will be in place. So thank you very much for that.
Yes, and just delighted, Mayor, that QTC are on board, guiding us through, helping us navigate the next few months when we're making some pretty big decisions for the city with regard to investment and obviously debt levels and, you know, understanding the commercial terms for each of these deals when they're presented to us. So I'm very grateful.
Especially since the original business case could never envisage COVID.
Absolutely.
And through the mayor, the resources that they will build for us and make available to us are going to be significant, I believe, the tools for us to measure as a council what their financial implications will be instead of relying on some historical data from old reports. So really looking forward to that.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll just wait for councillors Fickner and Madsen to come back. Actually, before they come back, what I'll do is actually call. I'd like to call in a adjournment for 10 minutes. It's nine thirty-three. If you're back here at, I guess, at nine forty-five, those in favour, please raise your hand. Like I said, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. See you back here at nine forty-five.
Welcome back, I'm back from adjournment, we're up to item fifteen point one which is the appointment of deputy mayor and there are two recommendations in this report. The first recommendation is that in line with the intent of the resolution dated the twenty seventh of April twenty twenty, council declare the office of the deputy mayor vacant, do I have a mover for that, did you hear councillor Johnick? Do I have a seconder for that, that councillor Ireland? I'll then open the matter up for discussion. There being no discussion, I put the matter to the vote, those in favour of declaring the office of deputy mayor vacant, please raise your hand. So there's myself, councillor Johnick, councillor Madsen, councillor Milligan and councillor Ireland, so the motion is carried. We then move on to recommend, and sorry, those against, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner, councillor Kunzelman. We now will move on to item B, that council appoint a deputy mayor from its councillors, so I guess I leave it open to the floor, to those who wish to nominate.
Thank you Mayor. Thank you Mayor, I'd like to re-nominate.
Sorry?
Thank you Mayor, I would like to nominate, continuing the role as deputy.
Thank you very much councillor Doyle. Yes.
And Mayor, I'd like to nominate councillor Nicole Johnick.
So you're, that's a foreshadowed motion?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, foreshadowed motion, okay, so I have councillor Doyle nominating, and do I have a seconder for councillor Doyle, thank you councillor Fekner. I'll wait for this to come back up so we can read this, Vicky, oh councillor Fekner. I'll just wait till it's back on the screen so everyone can read it. Is it possible to get it up on the screen? It's not up on the screen.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, well, thank you, thank you, okay. So the motion that has been moved and seconded is that council nominate councillor Marnie Doyle as deputy mayor, I'll now move the matter open for discussion on the floor. There being no discussion whatsoever, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. As you see councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner and councillor Kunzelman have voted for, for that. Those against, please raise your hand, myself, councillor Johnick, councillor Madsen, councillor Milligan, councillor Ireland, so that motion is defeated. So we now go on to the foreshadowed motion, that foreshadowed motion is that, I think councillor Ireland, you had, councillor Johnick?
Yes please.
As deputy mayor, do I have a seconder for that motion councillor Mads, Milligan? Thank you, I'll open it up for discussion.
Mayor, can I ask if councillor Johnick will accept the nomination and would she like to speak to it?
Thank you councillor Ireland, I would accept that, I am actually really humbled by the nomination, so thank you very much. It has been twelve months since we appointed councillor Marnie Doyle as our deputy mayor and I can't praise her more for all the efforts. It was the first year of a new council, a new mayor and a new direction, right in the middle of a pandemic. This first year was undoubtedly one of the most difficult years to fulfil this role and councillor Doyle continues to set the standard. On the twenty seventh of April two thousand and twenty, this council also resolved with intent to declare the office of the deputy mayor vacant after each twelve month period during the councillor term. And appoint a new deputy mayor from its councillors, so here we are twelve months on and it is again time to appoint a new deputy mayor. So I feel honoured to be nominated and passionately ready for the challenge. As the Chair of the Economic and Industry Development Committee, I have proactively spearheaded a number of initiatives that I will also continue to build on. These include council's initial Covid recovery strategy, which saw us inject money into local businesses and our community last year when we were faced with so much uncertainty. I also secured Ipswich the title of Queensland's small, first small business friendly council. And most recently, I established a special task force for the Halloween hailstone recovery when I saw a gap in the market's response. I also passionately deep dived into our resource recovery strategy to help our city deal with the way we handle our own waste moving forward. My plans for the next twelve months will be to continue with these projects for the benefit of the people of our city. I firmly believe that the next twelve months will be a tremendous year for council as our country starts to open back up and Covid restrictions ease. There is a sense that everybody wants to make up for lost time and I feel the same for Ipswich. Ipswich City and its council is large and complex and the decisions made are rarely straightforward. It is quite astonishing the range of happenings that Ipswich City Council is tasked. But the faces around this table and the organisation's officers and staff represent various skills, experiences, backgrounds and perspectives that we must remember to harness for the fairness and the benefit of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, is there any other discussion?
I have an amendment to propose.
Right.
Yeah, I have an amendment to propose to add the words at the end of the motion until the ordinary council meeting in April two thousand and twenty-two.
I'll just check with councillor Ireland if you're okay with that amendment and councillor Milligan, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes ma'am, I have an additional amendment though.
So you're not, so you're not okay, so you're not okay with that amendment?
It should be a point.
I should, oh, a point, okay.
That council appoint.
So we, I'll just check with councillor, we'll put that council appoint rather than nominate. So that, and I'll just pardon?
April, isn't it?
Yes, in April twenty twenty-two. Thank you councillor Madsen. So I'll just read that for clarity, that council appoint councillor Nicole Johnick as deputy mayor until the ordinary council meeting in April twenty twenty-two. And councillor Ireland, you're
That was a good pick-up, thank you ma'am.
And councillor Milligan obviously, yes. Is there any other discussion? There's no other discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand. Myself, councillor Johnick, councillor Madsen, councillor Milligan and councillor Ireland are for, those against, councillor Tully, councillor Doyle, councillor Fekner and councillor Kunzelman. So the motion is passed and carried. I've got the same for myself, this has been a very difficult decision because Marnie has been exemplary as a councillor, as a deputy mayor.
Thank you Mayor.
And for me to fall back on was I guess the intent that twelve months ago we agreed that we would share the responsibilities of deputy mayor. And so for me I've had to fall back on, I guess, on those principles that we agreed to that twelve months ago and that was certainly carried my, my session. We'll now move on to item fifteen point two which is the adoption of iFuture, so I should say congratulations councillor Johnick. Fifteen point two is the adoption of iFuture, Ipswich's city council's corporate plan twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six. Now, the recommendation is that council adopts iFuture as its corporate plan for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-six effective from the first of July twenty twenty-one as detailed in attachment one. Replacing council's advanced Ipswich plan and corporate plan twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-two. That the chief executive officer be authorised to update the corporate plan for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six with any minor administrative changes as required. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer about the corporate plan? No?
Mayor, if I may, may I say a few words?
Yes.
Just, thank you very much, noting the significance of this corporate plan, which I know is not lost on any of the mayor and councillors present in the room today, I'd just like to say a few words, if I may, in presenting it on behalf of the organisation. As you've seen from the document and from the report, the plan sets out the community's vision for twenty forty-one and a corporate plan for this council over the next five years. The community's vision statement for twenty forty-one is Ipswich, a city of opportunity for all, join us. The corporate plan sets out the outcomes we want to realise in twenty twenty-six across the four themes that will help us meet the needs of our city's growth in the coming years and to put us on a path to realising that twenty forty-one vision. The four themes being vibrant and growing, safe, inclusive and creative, natural and sustainable and a trusted and leading organisation. The community and staff have been involved in the development of iFuture and for that we thank the community in particular and absolutely our staff. With each phase that we've been through building on, refining and delivering the final product that we're very proud to put before you today. We did have direct engagement, as you've noted, with over two thousand people and were informed by eighteen thousand people, giving them opportunities to participate. For a city of our size, a sample of five hundred to seven hundred people would have provided good representation and we're really proud that we've well and truly exceeded that. For the organisation, iFuture will be our true north and to ensure we know how we are progressing, we will provide yearly updates in our annual report and provide reporting information on the transparency and integrity hub. By adopting this new corporate plan, it replaces of course council's advanced Ipswich and corporate plan twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two. And for us, today signals not the end of the project but merely the beginning of what we need to do to undertake over the five years to ensure that we realign our service delivery and our work to the plans, themes over the next five years to make it a reality, thank you.
Thank you very much, CEO, I appreciate that. Do I have a mover for the, thank you councillor Milligan? Sorry? Oh, sorry. It's down as just one recommendation in my report. What is up there is not in my report here. It's down as one recommendation.
We do have two, yeah, our apologies, Vicky.
Okay. Thank you. I move that we book A and B together and do I have someone who will move that, thank you very much CEO, thank you councillor Kunzelman. And seconder, councillor Milligan, thank you very much, I'll leave it open for discussion.
Yes ma'am, thank you. I just want to highlight the importance of this document from the perspective of an elected representative. You know, this is the piece of work that will decide the future of our city, not just for the next five years, but what we can expect in twenty forty-one. It is an aspirational document, but there's lots of work that's going to go in behind the scenes to ensure that all of our decision-making is kept on its true north by the guiding principles of iFuture. I'm really proud to present this today as part of the, you know, the new council. This is us making our mark on the city and we really get to enjoy, you know, dreaming about what Ipswich will look like in the future and, you know, and it was a really heartening experience to piece together this work alongside more than a thousand community members with a reach of eighteen thousand people, potential participants. So there was lots of visibility around this, there was lots of opportunity for our community to get involved and that really sets the tone for our new council. We want to be an inclusive community and I think that this document perfectly captures it. It's wonderfully aspirational and it will keep our decision-making on track for a better Ipswich.
Thank you councillor, councillor Kunzelman?
Like councillor Fekner, I'm very proud to be associated with this as an elected member of this council. There are two things that stand out to me, we have in the document ways in which residents can contribute to the plan and I think that's really important and people need to know that. And we also have behind us a way of assessing progress on this plan which are measurable objectives and I applaud that as well, thank you.
Thank you councillor Kunzelman.
I guess myself, we as councils commenced this sort of mid, mid last year on how we, we saw that this corporate plan would be, what that that aspirational visioning, that inspirational visioning for our city would be. So this is our corporate plan for the next five years, noting that we were visioning out for the, for the next twenty years. And I hope that our, that the, and we've received a lot of feedback from the community, from community reference groups, but pop-ups and a whole Ipswich Youth Advisory Council and a whole, a host of other online feedback as well. And I hope that the, the four themes of vibrant and growing, safe, inclusive and creative, natural and sustainable and a trusted and leading organisation do resonate with the residents of Ipswich. We're doing our best to represent you here and so thank you very much for the contributions you've made and we look forward to further feedback from the community on the plan.
Ma'am, just recognising, I'm not the mover, so speaking out of order here. But I think it's important to acknowledge that, that there are significant challenges in delivering on this document. The city faces extreme growth and not enough infrastructure to support it and that's all acknowledged here in the document. We're saying, we're putting our foot down to say this is what we want in our city, but it's going to be a fight to get there as well and I think that everyone in this room is up for that fight to advocate for the people of this city, thank you.
Thank you councillor Fekner.
If I may speak out of turn again. Following councillor Fekner's comments, that it does emphasise the role for residents to contribute to making this actually work and we look forward to their contribution in that comment. And so we can get to the place where we say, where the residents of Ipswich say, we trust our council and we have some faith in their planning.
Yes, and this is guides us for our budget decisions and all the work that we do in council. I'll then put this matter, both recommendation A and B to the vote, those in favour please raise your hand and it's unanimous and carried. Thank you, we now go to item fifteen point three which is a new report, the CEO organisational performance report for March twenty twenty, the recommendation that the report be received and contents noted. And I note that council have added this report in at our last council meeting as part of our meeting procedures. We feel that it's very important in line with expectations of the community of us, but also of the council organisation to increase good governance, to have greater transparency and integrity. So this new chief executive officer report will be provided to council each month and I hope that this gives residents another insight into the organisation but also for us as councils and our, and our duties as a, as a board member. Perhaps this will also assist us in our decision-making in how we manage the work that we do.
I'll head over to yourself, CEO, to, to speak to this report.
Thank you Mayor and councillors, as, as you've highlighted, this has been an important and welcome addition to council's governance arrangements. Thank you for your request and guidance, Mayor, on introducing the report as it, as it notes. This is in place in other local government organisations and other organisations more broadly across other sectors. And this is the first and we are welcoming of opportunities to improve the quality of the report over time as we present it to you each month. As you've noted, we, in the report, we seek to bring forward current significant matters, matters of particular risk. Legal matters that the organisation is, is dealing with that present particular importance and risk also. Importantly, a focus on our workplace health and safety, which is a fundamental and primary Importantly, a focus on our workplace health and safety, which is a fundamental and primary obligation and duty of care that we have to all of our workforce and to mayor and councillors, people and culture, finance and other important aspects of council's operations. We have deliberately sought to keep it concise and high level and hoping to bring forward to you the most significant matters and for it not to become overly detailed, descriptive and burdensome for the organisation to present and prepare. We do need to keep the balance between our delivery of outcomes and performance with governance. So as you've highlighted, mayor, you know, once again, new levels of transparency here where the first attachment is the outstanding and completed actions arising from council and committee meetings. So they are now public, you know, once again, taking our transparency to the community to a new level. So with that, proud to present to you our first organisational performance report, mayor.
Thank you very much. May I have a mover for this, please? Thank you councillor Fekner and a second, councillor Molligan. I'll open it up for discussion. I guess, CEO, if I go to the risk area and noting that obviously there's the work of the Audit and Risk Management Committee as well. Are there any areas in particular that you'd like to highlight to us as a board when it comes to risk?
Mayor, I could, I could note, you see, there one exception that's noted in this report as it was put together, which was a very, very unfortunate incident where a contractor that was performing work via a contract for council unfortunately lost his life while he was signalling at the front of the Irreview Recovery Transfer Centre, Recovery and Waste Transfer Centre. So we were approached, as you'd expect, by the regulator to provide documentation, which we did and ultimately there was no action or fault by council. However, it was still of great concern to us that a worker performing work for this community lost his life. The Audit and Risk Management Committee is due to meet on the nineteenth of May at its next quarterly meeting and we're preparing papers for that committee now. We have received the interim audit report for, from the Queensland Audit Office for the current financial year and that report will go forward to the next Audit and Risk Management Committee and as required by legislation, QAO's interim report will come forward to next month's Governance and Transparency Committee and then to council for, once again, open consideration. So we look forward to presenting that next month. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions of the CEO? No, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and passed. We now move on to fifteen point four, which is the monthly financial performance report for March twenty twenty one. And the recommendation is that the report on council's financial performance for the period ending thirty first of March twenty twenty one, submitted in accordance with section two oh four of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve, be considered and noted by council. May I please ask the relevant council officer? Does it come down?
Good morning, mayor and councillors. Jeff Keach, currently the acting general manager of corporate services.
Mr Keach, you probably know what I'm going to ask. Obviously, as we get to also the end of the financial year, I do still have some concern about under-delivery of capital works. How is that progressing?
Yep, sure. In the, in the month of May, in relation to the IED capital programme, the spend was significantly higher than it was in previous months at about eight point seven million. Still a couple of million less than what was forecast for that month. So you're right, there are, there are risks that are associated with that. The general of ideas outlined previously to the Growth and Infrastructure Committee that they're certainly delivering a significant number of projects at the moment that are on the ground. But there is certainly works that are heading towards the end of the year. So we're certainly still forecasting to be close to the year end in relation to the IED programme. I guess it'll be a question of timing and works at that stage. There is a, as noted in the report, in relation to the CBD and some of the retail works there, obviously some time issues still rising in relation to that as to when some of those retail works will be developed, whether it'll happen by thirtieth of June or into the early part of the new year. I would think, as I, as we hear at the moment, there's probably some delay that that will move into the next financial year most likely in relation to some of that retail delivery. And we'll obviously revise that and bring those back to council. Whether we look to do a formal budget amendment or we just carry over those monies, we can obviously talk to CEO etc in that space. But I think that's been discussed previously at the committees in relation to the CBD.
Are you seeing anything in our financial performance that will impact negatively on our financial sustainability ratios?
In relation to, and as we've sort of highlighted previously, the growth in infrastructure, there was some savings and some spend in relation to our asset rehabilitation. So where we'd previously to have a level of spend, we've delivered those works and will deliver those works but for less money. So therefore that would look to probably negatively impact the sustainability ratio. But I guess the positive with that is that the works have still been delivered. It's just that when you're comparing that to depreciation, the level of dollars may not reflect that in the ratio. As we've discussed before, our ratio is less than target, but that also reflects the fact that we have got probably some younger assets and then that delivery cycle. So it's not unusual to be, when the assets are relatively new, that you're not rehabilitating those at that point in time and that can occur sort of fifteen, twenty years, fifty years down the track. So our ratio has consistently been less than target, but it would be impacted by that reduced savings in rehabilitation spend.
Thank you, Mr Keach. Any other questions of Mr Keach? No, thank you very much, CFO. Do I have someone to move the report? Thank you councillor Fekner. A seconder? Thank you councillor Johnic. Leave that open for discussion? There being no discussion, I move to the vote. Those in favour of the report, please raise your hand. Thank you. It's unanimous and carried. We now move to fifteen point five, which is the updated asset accounting policy. And the recommendation that report is that the revised asset accounting policy, as detailed in attachment one, be adopted. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? I think, Mr Keach, yes. Please come in.
Thank you, mayor.
Your name and title?
Sure. Jeff Keach, the acting general manager of corporate services.
Just succinctly, what is the main impact of this update?
Yep. As noted in the report, the key change that's in there is actually just formalising our accounting policy in relation to the recognition of the timing of donated assets. So we might note there that the QAO raised an item in last year's audit report around the inconsistencies of some timing between what planning does and what accounting does in that space. And we've always had an accounting practice of timing and recognition. That's just formally now put in in policy that says the timing of when we will recognise both the revenue and the asset from an accounting perspective. That's the major change.
Thank you. Any questions of the CFO? No, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, acting general manager. Sorry, my apologies. Sorry, acting general manager. Thank you councillor Fekner. May I have a mover for that report? Thank you councillor Fekner. And a second by councillor Johnic. Open it up for discussion.
Just through you, mayor, accounting for assets is always a tedious and manual task and even just counting all the assets, I just couldn't imagine what it would be like in this type of organisation. So even when it comes to small businesses, it's something that's the most labourist task when you're looking at going through someone's financials. So just commending everyone in finance, it can't be easy. And obviously this is just bringing us up to speed, our policies up to speed with the way that they should be, so.
Thank you councillor Johnic. Any other discussion? I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We now move on to item fifteen point six, which is the promotion of green waste bins at Ipswich Show. The recommendation in the report is that council endorse the following promotion, which is proposed to be offered during the Ipswich Show, being for residents to sign up to council's opt-in green waste service during the Ipswich Show from the fourteenth to the sixteenth of May twenty twenty one, they will receive up to six weeks free service. Effectively, the resident will receive a green waste service from mid-May twenty twenty one with the annual normal charge commencing from the first of July twenty twenty one to the thirtieth of June twenty twenty two. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer on this? Yes, please. May I have the relevant council officer? Is that you, Kay? Yes, please. Ms Cavanagh?
Morning, mayor and councillors. Kay Cavanagh, manager of environment sustainability.
Have you seen if programmes like this have been used in other councils and how effective have they been? And how do we make sure it's as effective as possible?
Yeah, so one that I'm aware of is one that Brisbane City Council did to incentivise customers to take up or residents to take up their green waste promotion. They have a thirty dollar start-up fee, which they waived at the time to encourage people to join that service with great success.
And has council ever done anything like this before?
Not that I'm aware of in this sort of format, no.
Okay. Any other questions of Ms Cavanagh? Yes, councillor Tully?
Clarification on the wording. The last few words, I think, are they redundant because it should just read commencing from one July twenty twenty one. Otherwise, we've got it commencing on two dates.
So the fee would apply from the first of July, but the service would commence essentially from May.
Yeah, I understand that.
Oh, sorry.
I think councillor Tully's looking at, do we need to have two thirty June twenty twenty two? Is there a reason why that wording's there?
Just showing that annual charge period.
Well, then, okay, well, if that's right, well, then we don't need the word commencing. Were the annual charge applied from first of July twenty twenty one? I think we need to charge it one way or the other.
If it was amended to remove two thirty June twenty twenty two, would that change the intent of this program?
I think the terminology that councillor Tully's used as applied from the first of July would cover that more adequately, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Ms Cavanagh? Thank you.
Thank you.
We haven't moved to, haven't had a mover yet, so just before I ask for a mover, I'll change that recommendation slightly to remove the words two thirty June twenty twenty two. I'll just give people to... May I have a mover for this motion? Thank you councillor Molligan. A seconder? Thank you councillor Johnic. I'll then open it up for discussion.
Yep, thank you, mayor.
Councillor Fekner?
I love the idea of this program. I speak in support of rolling something like this out. I guess for me, you know, I have my support behind it in principle, even before knowing Brisbane City Council did something like that. Because for me, it's more about promoting the new way council is interacting with waste and it really highlights how we're moving forward and considering new and different things. We celebrated our twenty thousandth green bin late last year, early this year, and that was a huge milestone for us. And the way that waste is changing from Ipswich City Council's perspective in the potential rollout of more of these green bins and moving to Fogo collection, there's lots happening in this space. And it's wonderful to have a presence at the show to say, you know, we care, we understand and we want people to be making better decisions about what they're putting in the bin. And for me, that messaging alone is worth the presence at the show. And a little, you know, and a friendly little discount period.
It is, it is. Thank you councillor. And I note in the report, it talks about the fact that our city's twenty twenty waste audit has confirmed that only point oh five percent of acceptable food material is being recovered and the majority of material is entering landfill, so ninety nine point five percent. So it certainly, I think, will contribute to us diverting this to landfill. Yes, councillor Molligan?
Mayor, I'd also like to speak in favour of the proposal incentivising it in this way. Also allowing us at the show for additional information for education for residents in how to best use that service and that the city is then able to move forward with hopefully a higher uptake of well-utilised and properly utilised service for the residents and will go further towards achieving our strategies in that space.
Thank you councillor Molligan. There's no other discussion. I'll put the recommendation to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. And it's unanimous and carried. Thank you. We'll now move on to item fifteen point seven. I think councillor Fekner, you had a declared interest.
Just before I leave, mayor, are you aware of any notices of motion?
I'm not aware of any. I'll just check. I have no, no, no questions on notice.
Just noting that this is the last item of the council ordinary meeting today. I will say good morning to everyone.
Thank you. If something happens, we'll call you back. Thank you councillor Fekner. Thank you. Item fifteen point seven is the proposed renewal of lease over one one six Brisbane Street Ipswich to Rajesh Sharma. There are three recommendations here and I'm going to move these together. And I'll just, I'm going to amend the wording one because there's an option, and recommendation B has an option, so I'll just read through them. So recommendation A is that council resolve and apply the exemption under section two three six one C three of the Local Government Regulations twenty twelve Queensland and renew the existing lease over part of one one six Brisbane Street Ipswich and described as lease C in lot twelve on S P one zero three two two three, the land, to Mr Rajesh Sharma as the existing tenant of the land. B states that council enter into a new lease with Rajesh Sharma, the less C, for a period of three years, alternatively the period of five years. I'm moving forward a recommendation that we do that for five years. And C, that pursuant to section two five seven one B of the Local Government Act twenty nine, two thousand and nine, council delegate to the chief executive officer the power to take contractual action pursuant to section two three eight of the regulation in order to implement council's decision. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer in regards to that? No? I will, because I've made that amendment, I will move that motion. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Doyle? Thank you. I'll open it up for discussion. There being no discussion, I'll put the matter to the vote. Those in favour, please raise your hand. It's unanimous and carried. Thank you very much. Item sixteen is notices of motion. There are none. And item seventeen, questions on notice, there is none. So the meeting is closed at ten twenty three. Thank you very much.